Good evening. I've been informed that we have a quorum, and so I would announce that we will begin. The meeting is called to order, and we'll begin the 2008 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Belmont. Let me make a typical announcement first. There's a car with lights on. A red car, license plate 6541RY, has his or her lights on. Let me first thank Jeff Conti, Dolores Keefe, and many others who helped put this, the town meeting together. It's like everything in life, it looks a lot easier when you're on the outside than it does when you see how it's all put together. An enormous amount of good work goes into it, so I'd like to thank all of you. Let me start with a few formalities. First, defining the limits of the hall for town meeting members. The area forward of the aisle that crosses the hall, as you all know, are reserved for town meeting members, and as well for special invited guests. And at this point, I will just summarize what, on behalf of the various chairs of the committees, the groups that are welcome to join us, obviously not eligible to vote, but be admitted to the floor. The town administrator and assistant, the town accountant and department heads, the warrant committee, school committee, superintendent of schools, business manager, board of assessors, superintendent and business manager of the Minuteman, planning board, recreation commission, capital budget committee, board of library trustees, personnel board, board of health, contributory retirement board, cemetery commissioners, permanent building advisory committee, and our town council. Any other nominations for requests for joining us? Hearing none, hearing no objections, these requests are granted. Traditionally, for our counting of votes, the moderator appoints six tellers, two for the left section, two with the center, two in the right. On the left, Marty Cohen and Sandy Kendall. The center, Jim Stateon and Charlie Hammon. And on the right, Henry Gazarin and Mary Ann Scully. And Bob Galant will do the tables and be the coordinator. At this point, I would like to call on Reverend Lyle Atkinson of the Payson Park Church to give the invocation.
Good evening, and thank you for your service here in this town, in this land, in God's world. We are fortunate to be warm and dry this night, and even as a nation at war, to be safe on this soil. And so it is in this spirit I invite you now to give thanks for God's presence with us. Let us pray. Oh God of all ages and God of this time, by the many names we call you, we now bow our heads in faith, grateful for the gift of life and for the gathering of community. While we are a diverse people here this night, we thank you for your unifying spirit, trusting that your presence may lead us to work together for the good of all. Where there is division, oh God, lead us to understanding and agreement. Where there is want, inspire generosity and care. As we seek peace and agreement in this place, so we pray you will guide us to work for an end to division and war all over the globe, for it is your creation, oh God. In all its magnificence and in all its need, we seek to steward wisely. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Atkinson. We'll now have Boy Scout Troop 104 will lead us in the... 304, sorry. 304, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, singing "God Bless America" with Sandy Kendall at the piano.
... dance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, a nation of God, indivisible, and liberating, just for all.
Please join us in saying "God bless America."
(Music) God bless America, land that I love, every sideburn, glad driver, who ride with fire from above. From mountains to the valleys, to the oceans, I will go. God bless America, my home still home. God bless America, my home still home.
Thank you, Troops 304, and thank you, Sandy. I'd now like to ask the newly-elected and re-elected town meeting members to rise so the town clerk can administer the oath of office.
Okay, if you'll please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the bylaws of the Town of Belmont, and impartially perform the duties as a town meeting member, a position to which you have been duly elected? Thank you.
At this point, it's customary for the moderator to review the rules and procedures that govern our town meeting. As your new moderator, I would like to describe briefly my approach to this position. First thing I want to do is thank you for your support and good wishes. Thank you. I take this responsibility seriously. I've spent my career in public policy and government, and this is your town meeting, and town meeting is our legislative body. And it doesn't always run easily, we know, and democracy can be difficult. But it's a system we have, and it's a system we need to be proud of, and it's a system we want to work well. So you have my commitment that I will try to do everything I can to make this town meeting, town meetings, now and in the future, as smooth and productive as possible. To that end, one of my priorities is to have explanations, even brief, of every article, except the most routine. I hope that this will, we'll do this at the time after the warrant committee and capital budget committee and others have declared their votes, a brief description of the article, which I hope will accelerate our deliberations. Obviously, the more complex articles, as we traditionally do, will have longer explanations for your understanding. I also plan to limit, as appropriate, important as appropriate, discussion on the scope of the article. I don't want us to wander where we don't have to, into areas that are tangential to the motion that is under discussion. For example, and we'll come to this either later tonight or Wednesday, under Article 24 on the window signs, there is a proposal to amend the bylaw. And I am, it is not appropriate as part of the discussion to get into the, into a full-blown discussion of the wisdom or not of the underlying window sign bylaw, but rather to focus on the amendment and the impact of the amendment. Obviously, if somebody wants clarification about the connection between the amendment and the underlying bylaw, that's appropriate. But I just use that as one example where we, I want us to stick to the motion under consideration, and to have the best possible discussion of that particular motion. I very much want, and will try very hard, to be fair and even-handed. The moderator has given a lot of discretion, according to Massachusetts law and practice, and I want to use that responsibly and fairly. And finally, I just want to ask your indulgence, your indulgence. I'm committed to doing the best job I can. I certainly understand town meeting. I've been a 27-year town meeting member, but I know I'm going to make mistakes, and I would just ask that you bear with me. And what I would ask is that you make suggestions as how I and town meeting can improve, because that's certainly my goal. Now let me turn to a couple of, a few specifics. You, these, I won't attempt to cover all of the procedures that you've received in your packet, but let me highlight a few critical ones. One is our procedural rule with respect to the advance filing of certain proposed substantial amendments, three days before the close of business, three days before our session. The text of that rule is included in the moderator's message on procedures. I note that amendments affecting two articles have been filed, and you will hear about those later. Secondly, our bylaws provide that all votes must be taken in the first instance by voice-vote. If the moderator is in doubt as to the result, or if any town meeting member requests a counted vote, a standing vote shall be taken unless a roll called vote is requested in accordance with the bylaws before the standing vote is taken. I will remind the speaker when speaking the first time, who has reached the 10-minute mark, that he or she should wind up the speech. Town meeting members who have previously spoken on a matter should not ask to be recognized until all others who wish to speak have had a chance to speak, except to answer a question or correct a previous statement. No person may speak for more than five minutes when speaking for the second time. All speakers must address the moderator, and questions may be asked only through the moderator. At this time, I would like to, with the unanimous consent of town meeting members, ask the town clerk to read only the return of the warrant without reading the text of each printed article. If there's no objection, the town clerk will proceed accordingly.
Thank you. Certificate of notice, annual town meeting, April 28, 2008. Pursuant to the warrant for the annual town meeting to be held on April 28, 2008, I, Dolores A. Keefe, town clerk, do hereby certify that I gave notice of said meeting by having posted an attested copy of the warrant on the town clerk's official bulletin board in the town hall and at least five other places in town, seven days before the date of the meeting, in accordance with Chapter 39, Section 10 of the General Laws, and Section 2.3 of the general bylaws of the town. Furthermore, I do hereby certify that I gave notice of the annual town meeting of April 28, 2008, by causing a copy of the warrant to be sent by mail to the town meeting members at least seven days before the date of this meeting, and by causing copies of the warrant to be made available to the public at the town clerk's office and the public libraries, all in accordance with Section 2.4 of the general bylaws of the town and the Representative Town Meeting Act of 1926 as amended.
Thank you, Dolores. At this point, I will recognize Selectman Jones for a resolution.
Mr. Moderator, Ralph Jones, town meeting member, precinct 2, and member of the Board of Selectmen. I have a proclamation. Whereas Alyssa Liz Norris is being recognized and honored today for her years of service and dedication to the Town of Belmont, and whereas Liz Norris was a graduate of Radcliffe College, a talented writer, an astute political observer, and a tireless contributor to the Town of Belmont, and whereas Liz and her husband, Richard, were 40-year residents of the Town of Belmont, and their three children, Catherine, Edward, and Jennifer, were educated in the Belmont Public Schools, and whereas Liz became active in public life after the Payson Park Elementary School burned down in 1974, becoming an advocate for replacing the school, and served as a town meeting member for 29 years, and whereas Liz is a member of, was a member of the planning board, working with objectivity, tenacity, and professionalism, and was instrumental in the zoning review that took place in the late 1980s, and Liz never lost sight of the mission of the planning board relative to the nature and future of the Town of Belmont, and whereas Liz served on the McLean Task Force, which negotiated the agreement between McLean Hospital and the town, and Liz was respected by both the members of the town team and the McLean team. Whereas Liz served on the superintendent's advisory committee on the future building needs of the Belmont Public Schools, which recommended the renovation of the Burbank, Winbrook, and Channery Middle Schools, and whereas Liz Norris, in all of her work for the town, was quick-witted, astute, and able to cut quickly to the heart of the matter, possessing an amazing memory for detail and a dry, sharp wit. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Belmont joins with the citizens of the town in paying tribute to Liz Norris and expresses her, its gratitude for her extraordinary gift of time and attention to the public good. Signed, Angelo R. Forense, chairman, Daniel L. Clark, vice chairman, and Ralph Jones. I believe that Richard Norris, her husband, and Edward Norris are here with us this evening.
Liz would have been delighted if she'd known that this was coming. Thank you.
I'll now recognize Mr. Leclair for a resolution.
A proclamation. Whereas Paul Solomon is recognized and honored today for his six years of service to the town, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and over 40 years as a town meeting member, and whereas, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, Paul advanced issues related to the fair and equal treatment of individuals through the creation of a permanent human rights committee, and whereas Paul was a major force in the development of, in fruition of the new senior center building, and worked tirelessly for the seniors of the town, and succeeded in turning the dream of a permanent senior center into a reality, and whereas Paul was instrumental in establishing a committee, Vision 21 Implementation Committee, which set forth a working vision for Belmont's future, and whereas Paul has distinguished himself in the private sector, in the field of pediatrics, and in the public sector as a humanitarian, a visionary, a goal setter, and civic-minded individual, and whereas Paul has been an advocate of energy conservation, and has worked to raise awareness in conservation and green buildings in the Town of Belmont, and whereas Paul has brought his unique talents, dedication to the community, and broad perspective to the Board of Selectmen, always working to improve capabilities of the town, to put procedures in place to ensure the welcome participation of citizens in policymaking, and whereas his expertise proved invaluable to fellow board members, particularly during union negotiations, contractual agreements, and preparing bid documentation, and his commitment to the role of Selectmen set an example for all who serve the public. Now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Belmont joins with the citizens of the town in paying tribute to Paul Solomon for his contributions to the town and for the standard of excellence which he always set. Signed, Angelo Forense, Dan Leclair, and Ralph Jones.
Congratulations, Paul.
I don't remember that piece about negotiations, but if he said I did it, I guess I did. I just want to say very briefly that I have been honored, and it has been a privilege to serve in town meeting for 40 years and to be your Selectman for the last six years. I've loved every minute of it, I'll miss it. And I have one thing I'd like to say to you, and I hope there may be a couple of people watching on television, and that is that I commend all of you for being town meeting members, and I do hope that you and others watching will stimulate others to run for town meeting, so that we will have a truly representative body. We need community involvement, and right now, the involvement isn't as great as it ought to be. So please, keep up the good work, and I wish you all the best of luck. And I'm not going away. Thank you very much.
I'd now like to call on Selectman Forense to make a preliminary motion on the order of the articles. I've been asked by the Selectmen to say that they are unanimous on each of the articles tonight, I think with one or two exceptions, so when they, you do not hear their report, it's because they are unanimously in support of that article. Where they are not, you will hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Angelo Forense, town meeting member, precinct 3, and chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Move that the articles and the warrant be considered in the following order: 1, 2, 13, 14, 16, 17, 19, 15, 18, 21, 26, 27, 25, 9, 6, 7, 8, 12, 11, 5, 10, 4, 3, 22, 24, 23, and finally, 20.
Do I have a motion, I mean, do I have any discussion? Yes, Mary Ann?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Mary Ann. Ms. Scully didn't hear.
Mary Ann Scully, precinct 2. There are two 19s. Would you like 19 after 17, or 19 after 5?
I believe it's 19 after 17. Is that correct? Uh, Jeff? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 1, the only report that we were to have was from Representative Brownsberger, and I've been told that he is in the State House, they're deliberating the budget. I don't think he's here, is that correct? So I'll, we'll use the moderator's prerogative and move over Article 1, and if he's able to be here, then we will return to Article 1 later in the evening to hear his report. So Article 2, Carolyn Bunyan.
Carolyn Bunyan, town meeting member, precinct 8. Article 2, moved that the Board of Selectmen be, and it hereby is authorized, to bring and defend actions for and against the town, to submit any such claims to arbitration, and to enter into settlement on account of the same in behalf of the town as and when it deemed it for the best interest of the town. So, so to do. Said power shall be vested solely in the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 13, Floyd Carmen, town treasurer.
Mr. Moderator, Floyd Carmen, town treasurer, town meeting member at large. Article 13, moved that there be and hereby is transferred the sum of $530,000 from the sale of cemetery lot account to the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund.
Can I hear a report of the warrant committee?
The warrant committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
And the capital budget committee?
Capital budget committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Mr. Carmen.
The cemetery commissioners have a policy in place that 50 percent of all cemetery lot sales will be transferred to the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. The earnings from the Perpetual Care Fund will be used to offset any of the cemetery maintenance expenses.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 14, Floyd Carmen again.
Mr. Moderator, Floyd Carmen, town treasurer, town meeting member at large. Article 14, moved that the treasurer be and hereby is authorized to apply proceeds received from the sale of the Harvard Lawn Fire Station in the amount of $615,000 towards a reduction of the debt issued, which was voted under Article 7 of the October 24, 2005 Special Town Meeting for the construction of the new senior center.
We have a report from the warrant committee?
Warrant committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
And the capital budget committee?
Capital budget committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Mr. Carmen.
It was unfortunate that the timing of the Harvard Lawn Fire Station sale and the financing of the fire station were not perfectly matched in sync. The $615,000 proceeds from the Harvard Lawn Fire Station can only be used for a capital project. I recommend it, since the next capital project is the senior center, we transfer these monies to this project, which will reduce the borrowing from $6,300,000 to $5,700,000.
Is there any discussion? Joe White.
Joe White, precinct 4. I have a couple of questions. One is, will this reduce what, what the taxpayers are going to pay?
On this borrowing, yes.
Right. But not on the price of the senior center?
The appropriation for the senior center was $6,300,000.
Okay, so we're going to pay $6,300,000 minus this $600,000.
Exactly. So we were, we were borrowing for $5,700,000.
Okay. And the other thing is, I noticed previously the town, the Selectmen had approved some excavation for parks... for parking spaces. Is that going to be included in the senior center, or is that separate, and does it cost us outside of that?
Mr. Forense?
Angelo Forense, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. They're going to put some, as part of the senior center, there are going to be some parking spaces. We're moving the sidewalk and replacing the fence along the beachside side of the field, and the funding is coming out of existing funding that's within the community development area. So there's no additional funding, or that's being funded under the cap essentially, it's being funded from town funds.
So it's not, the senior center funds aren't going to pay for that work?
That is correct.
Okay, but wasn't that work involved in the senior center? Wasn't that necessary for the senior center to pass?
It was necessary in order for the senior center to pass, but there were no funds available in the senior center in order to do that work, so the Board of Selectmen, because it was not a significant amount of money, decided to fund it out of existing town funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? It passes. Article Sixteen, Lockman Jones. Ralph Jones, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, and a member of the Board of Selectmen. Article Sixteen, that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $375,429.68 for the investigation and evaluation of the sanitary sewer and storm drain system, and for performance of the remaining work necessary to complete a GIS-based mapping and interactive model of the sanitary sewer and storm drain system, in this case called the project, related to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority Infiltration and Inflow Local Financial Assistance Program. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $375,429.68 and issue bonds or notes therefore under Chapter Forty-Four of the General Laws or any other enabling authority. That the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of said amount from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, MWRA, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the MWRA, and otherwise to contract with the MWRA with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof. And that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to expend all funds for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. Report from the Warrant Committee?
Warrant Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
And the Capital Budget Committee?
Capital Budget Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Mr. Jones?
Very simply, what this is a continuation of work that's been done by the Community Development Department, developing maps, measuring flows, and developing a hydraulic model of the sanitary and storm sewer system of the town of Belmont. The financing is as follows. It's approximately a $750,000 project. $375,000, as noted here, will be borrowed from the MWRA at zero interest, and the remainder will come as a grant to the town, at no cost to the town. So the total project will be approximately 750, of which 375,000 will be borrowed at zero percent.
Is there any discussion? If not, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in... Oh, I didn't... Please. Go to the microphone.
Turned around. Barbara Pasrow from Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. Do we... Now, I know there's been all kinds of discussions on infiltration and inflow, you know, what are they called? Anyway, the rate, the ratio between the two, you know, and have we set upon something here when we're studying this? Is there something set up, so we know what we're looking at? I mean, do we have?
Oh, yes. We have a set of procedures being used by our contractor, Faye, Spofford, and Thorndike, that includes some fairly sophisticated measurement techniques, as well as standard methodologies for identifying infiltration, which typically occurs when there's something going on in the ground, and also inflow, when there are illegal connections from a house or a building into the sewer system, the sanitary sewer system.
Because when this development at McLean's is full, is finished, I mean, there's going to be thousands more junk going in through the sewers, and I mean, is that part of building? Are we testing that?
Well, we certainly will have more information available to us to be able to model the impact of any new proposed development when this model is completed, yes.
Shouldn't we have done that before?
We certainly have tried. We began working on this a few years ago, and we were able to get...
But why didn't we do it before McLean's was allowed?
That actually is something that was before my time, working with sanitary and storm drain work. I certainly think it's a great idea...
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about the town, the Board of Selectmen. Have you been up there lately?
Here we go.
I'm sorry, I...
I'm not... Anyway, I just want us to be making a decision now, or making decisions now with the information that we need to make, so that we don't do another McLean's in the town. It's a disaster. So, I mean, I would like to see this study...
I want to keep to the scope of this article, and not review the history of McLean.
With respect to the general question, whether or not we would be better off with having a model developed to be able to analyze the flows coming from proposed developments, the answer is undoubtedly yes. We've been taking action for the past two years here at Town Meeting to get appropriations for this, to purchase materials, and to purchase flow measurement mechanisms, and I think we're taking all appropriate action.
Is there other discussion? Yes, Mr. Semuels?
Joel Semuels, Precinct Six. Mr. Moderator, how long will it take the town to repay the no-interest loan?
The term of the no-interest is five years.
Will this cause an increase in water and sewer rates for the town's people?
The borrowing anticipated under this is built into a financial model used to construct the sewer rates. It is, however, a very minor part of the total overall cost for the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
So the answer is no? No increase?
No. I can address the increase in sewer rates later, when that issue comes before the town, or I can do it right now.
Why don't we do it at that time?
Whatever the moderator prefers.
Well, if you... I mean, well, go ahead.
There is a proposed...
Do it, answer it now.
There is a proposed 5% increase for sewer rates this coming year, and the financial models that we are showing right now would project probably a 5% fairly level increase for future years, which would incorporate not only this small amount of repayment, but also much, a much larger borrowing, which is discussed in Article Seventeen.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Joe White, Precinct Four. Since you allowed the McLean word to come up, a small question of...
No, I didn't allow it to come up. I said it was outside the scope.
Say it again?
I said that reviewing the history of McLean was outside the scope of the discussion.
Well, I have one question, and you tell me if you don't want to answer it, and I'll walk away.
All right.
The revenue coming from McLean has come in, is there a net... I mean, do we have a number that tells us that McLean is bringing money into our town now?
I don't think that's appropriate under this article.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
As it's approved by more than a two-thirds margin. Article Seventeen, Mr. Jones?
Article Seventeen, Mr. Moderator, Ralph Jones, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, and also a member of the Board of Selectmen. Moved that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $11,608,000 for the installation of new sanitary sewers and storm drains, the relining of existing sanitary sewers and storm drain, rehabilitation of existing sewage pumping stations, and for other improvements to the town's sanitary sewer and storm drain system. This described as the project. Related to the Department of Environmental Protection State Revolving Loan Program. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $11,608,000 and issue bonds or notes therefore under Chapter Forty-Four of the General Law or any other enabling authority. That the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Department of Environmental Protection, the department, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the department, and otherwise to contract with the department with respect to such loan, and for any federal or state aid available for the project and for the financing thereof. And that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to expend all funds for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project.
Report from the Warrant Committee?
Warrant Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
And the Capital Budget Committee?
Capital Budget Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Mr. Jones?
Let me make a brief statement about this. As you all know, our sanitary sewer system is in a state of substantial disrepair. And in fact, the sanitary sewer system is leaking into the storm system, and then out into receiving waters in and around the town of Belmont. Several Belmont residents have been involved in monitoring these outflows and have provided those results to the Department of Environmental Protection, which has appropriately, I think, issued a notice of noncompliance with our stormwater discharge permit until we can find and repair these leaks from the sanitary system into the stormwater system. We, recognizing this last year, and also recognizing that the federal government, through the state DEP, had a revolving loan program whereby municipalities could apply for financial aid at a rate of 2%, well below the current market rate of 5% for municipal borrowing, decided that we would submit an application, and the application covers three major projects, which I can discuss in detail a little bit later. But the general intent of this was to get a substantial sum of money at the lowest rate possible, so that we could address sanitary and stormwater issues facing the town.
Ms. Mann?
Anne Mann, Precinct Four. I'm wondering, are you, when you're repaving these roads in Belmont, are you replacing the sewer system before you repave them, or are you waiting for a problem and then repaving them?
The... I can answer that, Mr. Moderator.
Please.
If the... Well, when there's any repaving going, and the streets are open, and Glenn Clancy could add to this, the town does take the opportunity, while the streets are open, to make point repairs on any sewer pipe that is exposed at that time. Glenn, do you want to add to that? I must add, however, that that will not be paid for by these funds, it'll be coming out of the operating revenue of the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Mr. Clancy?
Mr. Moderator, Glenn Clancy, Director of Community Development. Our practice is that we actually evaluate sewer and storm drain on the roads that have been identified for repair. That evaluation entails videotaping the sewer mains to determine the condition that they're in. We then decide whether or not we can do a point repair on some of the problems that we discover, or whether or not we actually have to do a relining. The problems that we encounter will determine the work that we have to do. But basically, if a road has been identified for reconstruction, we look at the sewer and the storm drains before we go in there, to make sure we've taken care of that. In addition, we're also working with the Water Department and the Water Main Replacement Program to make sure the water mains are addressed as well. We're also in contact with Keyspan, Verizon, Comcast, essentially every utility that's in play, we try to get ahead of the construction of the road by addressing the utility issues first.
But do you have a rule, so that if you're repaving a road and the sewer system that's underneath it is, say, 75 years old, you might go ahead and replace it even though you don't see damage to the system?
No. No. And the reason I think we do that is, well, I should say, the reason that I don't do that is because if I have a sewer main that's in good condition, I don't feel that it's necessary to spend the town's money that way. The Clay Pipe Institute will tell you that a sewer pipe, clay pipe, should last you in the vicinity of 100 years.
And on the average, what is the age of the sewer pipe in Belmont?
They run the gamut. I mean, the pipes in Belmont, some of them are older than 100. Some of them, you know, there's a sewer main on Mill Street that was put in the mid-'80s. But generally, I would say most of the sewer work in this town was done between the '20s and the '50s, would be my guess.
Thank you.
Ms. Scali, were you next, I think?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. Which Scali do you want?
Ms. Scali. You. I believe you...
Mary Ann Scali, Precinct Two. My question is, for the poor people out there watching us on Town Meeting that pay the bills, you have $11,600,000 up there, and you mentioned loans. Are there any loans out there, or is that the $11 million is definitely what it's going to be?
Provided that the DEP approves all of our designs when they're submitted to the Department for Funding, it will be approximately that amount. And I want to add that another virtue of this particular program is they basically establish for us a line of credit, which we draw down and pay vendors from, and then when the entire project is finished, we are then starting to repay the amounts, and on a 2% basis, there's approximately $700,000 a year of debt service, and that's been calculated into our forward-looking financial plans for the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
So, as we look at our water bills, because we have the MWRA to think about, too, you're saying in addition to that, we will be possibly paying 5% more per year?
No, I'm sorry. If I wasn't clear, let me make it very clear. The financial plans that I've looked at and worked on with Glenn and with Peter Castanino show a 5% steady increase over the next five to six years, and that increase would be sufficient to cover all costs from the MWRA, unless they're extraordinarily high, and to cover all the debt service for this particular project, and to cover the debt service for Article Sixteen.
So then, how much, what would the percentage be on our bills that we should look forward to?
5%.
Per year?
Per year.
For how many years?
So far, I've looked out five to six years. I think you could actually run that out about 20, but frankly, the problem with that is the question of how much and how expensive the point repairs are, that were discussed by Glenn earlier. If we're opening roads and doing point repairs, and if they're significant, those costs are going to come out of our operating revenues or the retained earnings of the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and it's difficult for me at least, or anybody else, to model exactly what that's going to be.
Thank you.
And gentlemen on this side?
Vincent Stanton, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. I understand this is an ongoing repair program, and that there's no fixed point at which it will be quote-unquote "fixed" or "perfect." Nonetheless, it would be helpful to have a sense of the scale of this problem. And so my question is, what fraction of the sewer system will be repaired for this $11.6 million, or alternatively, what percentage of the way is the town towards having, not a perfect system, but a system that would be acceptable from the point of view of the state and the INI problem under control? Is this 5% of the problem, 20% of the problem, 50%? Thank you.
Mr. Clancy?
Mr. Moderator, Glenn Clancy. I'm going to take a shot at this. Without having the information I'd like to have in front of me. I would estimate that the relining work that we have done on our sewer system to date has probably addressed approximately 15% to 20% of the sewer system. This article that's before you, the $11.6 million, a major component of this article is relining and rehabilitation work in the Wellington Brook watershed. Okay, I'm going to estimate that that's going to account for probably another 20, maybe 25% of the sewer system. Another major component of this is looking at the sewer problems in the Windbrook neighborhood. It's a smaller, more localized area, so I don't expect that's going to take a big bite out of the overall percentage. But I feel good that a combination of this type of work that we're talking about here tonight, the work that we do on the pavement management roads as we continue to do road repair, anything that we encounter in repair as a result of our infiltration inflow removal, which isn't contemplated under Article Seventeen, all of this combined, I think says that the town of Belmont over the next 10 to 15 years is going to be in pretty good shape. Of course, I can't look in the ground and tell you specifically what we're going to encounter, similar to what Ralph just said about point repairs, but I think we're moving in the right direction. I think, as I said, you know, we've got a pretty good percentage of it locked up already.
But overall, it sounds like a 50 to 75 million dollar, over, counting what's been spent and what's in the future, over a 15-year period, something like that.
I wouldn't go, I wouldn't be able to go that far at this point to say that.
I see. Thank you.
And now the Mr.
Joe Scali, Precinct Two. I'm glad you mentioned the Windbrook area.
I'm glad you mentioned the Windbrook area. How will this relieve, relieve the sewer problem since the, beyond the, beyond the Windbrook area, the water level's below sea level?
Let me just take a quick, make a quick statement about that. We have analyzed at some, at some detail where sewer surcharging occurs in the Windbrook neighborhood. We had a report prepared by Faye Spofford and Thorne Dyke on that subject. They also have considered eleven different options on how to reduce the flows into that area to hopefully reduce or mitigate the surcharging in that neighborhood. When we saw the plans and evaluated them at this town level, we, and looked at our models, it appeared that the proposed solutions by Faye Spofford and Thorne Dyke might be taking the water that was coming down from higher elevations, moving it around the Windbrook area, and sending it straight into Cambridge to flood them. While I know, while I know there's no, while I know that's not a terribly unattractive option to some, I think, given the work that Will Brownsberger has done with the tri-community network of communities Arlington, Cambridge, and Belmont, it would behoove us to work cooperatively with them rather than to flood them. Therefore, what we are looking at now is having the engineers develop a new plan that would involve somewhat less diversion and more control of inflow, thereby reducing total flows going into the sewer system and the total flows going into the MWRA connector over on Flanders Road.
So that will give them some relief?
I think so, yes. And we haven't yet seen a final plan. We will hope to get that by October to get it in for funding.
I won't go to Cambridge.
Ms. Schaefer?
Mr. Moderator Penny Schaefer, Precinct seven. Could you tell me how long, tell the meeting how long this money's going to last us? We're going to spend this all in a year? We're going to spend this over five years? When are you coming back for some more?
What I've seen from Glenn's estimate in terms of construction is that the design and construction work for this will cover, will take place over two years, except for there are some pump replacements also in this. I mean, there are three parts to this. One is relining along Wellington Brook, the second one is pump replacement, and the third is the Windbrook area. The pump replacement could be taken care of in one year, but the other two projects are bigger and will go over two years.
Are pumps very expensive? I'm wondering how we can spend five or six million dollars in sewers a year when we could only spend three million for roads?
I'm sorry, we're only spending seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the pumps, is that, was that the-
Well, I was asking, I mean, my basic question is, how could we spend that money, the money that fast, when we can't spend road money that fast? And so, why is it that our sewers much more expensive per foot, or are they less disruptive? Or how could we, why can't we fix our roads that fast?
I think I understand the question Penny, and I think the basic idea is that we're going to be assigning the independent evaluation of this construction to an independent contractor paid for out of these funds. In the roads case, I think it's somewhat different, because you're really tearing up roads around the town, and you can only do so much disruption. Sewer relining, for example, requires no trenching and therefore no disruption of traffic. Replacement of the pumps will require no relining and no replacement. The only part of this that would potentially involve some trenching, and even then we'd have to look at it, would be the part in Windbrook.
So, two years from now, you may be coming back for some more money, and two years from now, we'll start paying that off?
Two years from now, we'll start paying that off, two years-
Over what, over what kind of period?
Twenty-year, twenty-year term. That's what the SRF federal regulations are, it's in statute at the federal level.
Is there other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote this requires two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's passed unanimously. Approving. Article fifteen, Ellen Casaraba. Nineteen, pardon me. Yes.
Martha Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct five. Moved that the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to enter into an agreement with the town of Lexington, Lexington pursuant to Chapter forty, Section four A of the Massachusetts General Laws, to share the cost of providing nursing services which the Board of Health is authorized to perform.
The Warrant Committee?
Warrant Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Mr. Younger, did you want to say a word about this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Younger, Town Administrator and resident also of Precinct five. Actually, most of the credit here has to go to our Health Department and our Health Director Donna Moultrieb. This is a position that has remained vacant for a number of years in Belmont because we have not been able to fill this position under our current structure. We have been looking with various communities, specifically Arlington, Lexington, Bedford, a couple of other ones, looking at regionalized services. One of these which have come into fruition may be the Public Health Nurse as a regionalized program between the town of Lexington and town of Belmont. Obviously, we're looking for a nurse, town of Lexington was looking for a nurse, and through the efforts of their new Health Director and our Health Director Donna Moultrieb, they may be coming to an agreement to share the service. If you want to say some more specifics, Donna, I was very happy to speak on this for the specifics of the nurse program itself.
Is there any discussion? Yes.